All right, good evening, everyone. We want to call this Caldwell County Board of Commissioners meeting for May 17th, 2021, to order. I'd like to welcome those who are in attendance and our audience here this evening, as well as those who are joining us by TV. As we begin our evening, we will have our invocation this evening by the Pastor Rick Bowman, and he is from Crossroads Church, and we'll follow that with our Pledge of Allegiance, and Commissioner Robbie Wilkie will lead us in that. So Pastor Rick.
I'd like to say, first of all, it's a, as a lifetime president of Caldwell County, it's an honor to be here, and I appreciate the invitation. So let us pray. Most holy God, Lord, we love you, and we come into your presence, Lord, with praise and honor, glory, Lord, also with thanksgiving. Lord, thankful that we live in a county such as Caldwell, a county, Lord, that still sees the importance of prayer. Lord, that without you, we can do nothing, but with you, we can do all things. So we thank you for this county. We thank you for a county, Lord, that still is not ashamed to put your son's cross up at Easter, your son's star up at Christmas, and, Lord, for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon this county. We are truly thankful. Lord, we're thankful for these servants that you have brought to this place for such a time as this. I thank you, Lord, for their willingness to serve. I pray blessings upon each of them, for their health, upon their families, upon all parts of their life, Lord, may the blessings of God be upon them. But most of all, Lord, we're thankful for the privilege to pray. Lord, your word says that your son broke down the petition between man and God when he went to that cross and come forth from that tomb, and, Lord, that you said that because of that, we have the access to the very throne of grace in a time of need. Lord, we are truly people in a time of need. We need divine guidance from Almighty God like never before.
Yes.
Lord, so we thank you for that privilege. Now, Lord, I pray blessings upon this service. I pray, Lord, that you would give these men the compassion that they need to make the decisions that would govern this county. I pray, Lord, that you would give them the compassion of the individual for the well-being of the county as a whole, but, Lord, most of all, to please you. I pray that you give them wisdom, Lord, to make the decisions that Almighty God would have them to make. I pray, Lord, that you would just give them that divine unction from heaven. And, Lord, I pray, most of all, Lord, that you would give them unity. Your word says that where the brethren dwell in unity together, that that's where the blessings of Almighty God is at, and we need your blessings above all else.
Yes.
So, Lord, I commit this service to you. I thank you for all you have done, are doing, and going to do in this county. It's in the name of our Savior and our Lord Jesus Christ, I ask these many favors. Amen.
Please face flag. Pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Pastor.
Are there any amendments to our agenda from the clerk?
Mr. Chairman, there's two proposed amendments this evening. Add item 6D under Proclamations to include a proclamation for National Police Week, which was actually this past week. And then lastly, item 8M on the consent agenda, received a budget revision and a request to instate a North Carolina child healthcare consultant position. The Health Department will be receiving funding to start and fund this position, which was in partnership with Caldwell County Smart Start.
All right. And then I'll take the privilege to also place on our agenda this evening at the end of our meeting, North Carolina General Statute 143-318,11A3, and that's to consult with our attorney, employed or retained by this body, in order to preserve that attorney-client privilege, so we can have a closed session, and also 143-318,11A6, to discuss personnel matters while we're in that closed session. So with those additions to our agenda, what's the pleasure of the board in adopting our agenda this evening?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept this evening's agenda as the county clerk has presented.
Any other discussion or comment? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. And with that, we will begin with proclamations under item 6, and EMS Week is the first one up, and Chief Dino DiVonardi is with us this evening, too. Read the proclamation.
Thank you for having me again. We're in pretty good company, following up Law Enforcement Week, Nurses Week, Firefighter Day. We've had quite a few proclamations and celebratory weeks, and then we're obviously in good company with DSS, with Social Worker Month, as well as Older Americans Month this week. And each of the ones that I've named, you know, we have worked very closely with over the years, but especially over the past year and a half, two years during the pandemic. So I ask for approval of this proclamation for EMS Week, to designate the week of May 16th through the 22nd, 2021, as Emergency Medical Services Week, whereas emergency medical services are a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services have grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, prehospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care workers, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, I, Randy Church, Caldwell County Board of Commissioners Chairman, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 16th through the 22nd, 2021, as Emergency Medical Services Week. With the EMS strong theme, this is EMS, caring for our communities. I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities.
All right. So in hearing that proclamation read, I'll make a motion that we adopt that this evening, as has been read by Chief Dino DiVonardi. Any other comment or discussion from the board?
Just want to take this opportunity to thank you and your staff for all you do.
Thank you. Feel free, we'll send it out, but feel free to stop by Hudson Facility, and we're going to have a couple recognition ceremonies towards the end of the week, and then next week with some meals as well, so.
Awesome. Thank you, Dino.
All right. So with that, I'll call the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. And thank you, Dino, and all your staff for what you do for us. Next is our Older Americans Month recognition, Felicia Woods and April Austin. So let me ask you, as you come, what is an older American? What qualifies to be an older American?
Sixty and better.
I ain't got there yet. Thank you.
My poster job.
All right. Thank you so much for letting us be here and letting us speak. I am April Austin, the Director for the Caldwell Senior Center, and joining Felicia to talk about Older Americans Month and a special event that we've got coming up. And this year's theme for Older Americans Month is Communities of Strength, and I think that is more appropriate now than it may have ever been before. In difficult times, communities find strength in people, they find strength in their communities. In the past year, we've seen this a time and time again with Caldwell County, as friends and neighbors and businesses have found new ways to support each other. In our community, older adults are a key source of this strength. Through their experiences, successes, and difficulties, they have built resilience that helps them face new challenges, and there've been many of those in the past year. And when communities tap into this, they become stronger, too. Each May, the Administration for Community Living leads the celebration of Older Americans Month, and this year's theme, again, is Communities of Strength, recognizing the important role older adults play in fostering the connection and engagement that builds strong, resilient communities. Strength is built and shown not only by bold act, but also small ones. Strength empowers older citizens to contribute to their own health and well-being, and the health and well-being of their fellow citizens of all age, and I think we see that with the percentage of senior citizens that have, you know, gotten vaccines and been involved in vaccine awareness. Strength is affirming dignity, self-worth, independence of older persons by tapping into their experiences, their skills, their knowledge, and enabling their continued contributions to the community. This year, the Caldwell County Department of Social Services and the Senior Center are working together to celebrate Older Americans Month a little bit differently. I'm sure most of you are very familiar with Celebration of Life. I've been fortunate to have been involved with that since the year 2000, with my time at DSS and at the Senior Center, and obviously, those celebrations have had to change the last couple of years, so we're going to be doing something a little bit differently this year, and I'm going to let Felicia tell you about that.
So on Friday, May the 28th, from 1:00 to 3:00, we plan to have what is so popular nowadays, a drive-by health fair. It will be on a much smaller scale than what people who have maybe been to Celebration of Life in the past have been used to, but it will just be a time where they can come through, get bags full of resourcing information, plus the freebies that everybody loves, like pens and notepads and all those good things that they like to pick up. Like I said, much, much smaller scale, but we did not want this year to pass by and not recognize this group like we normally have. Last year, if we'd have been able to have a Celebration of Life, it would have been our 50th year. So, you know, unfortunately, we were just getting started with COVID then, so we didn't really get to do anything. So this year, we wanted to team up with the Senior Center and at least do something to show that we're still appreciative and that we haven't forgotten those folks and their contributions. So if you guys don't have any questions, I will go ahead and read the proclamation, and we'll go from there.
All right.
Whereas Caldwell County includes a growing number of older Americans who have built resilience and strength over their lives through successes and difficulties, and whereas Caldwell County benefits when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds are included and encouraged to share their successes and stories of resilience, and whereas Caldwell County recognizes our need to nurture ourselves, reinforce our strength, and continue to thrive in times of both joy and difficulty, and whereas Caldwell County can foster communities of strength by creating opportunities to share stories and learn from each other, by engaging older adults through education, recreation, and service, and encouraging people of all ages to celebrate connections and our resilience. Now, therefore, we, the Caldwell County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May 2021 to be Older Americans Month. We urge every resident to recognize older adults and the people who support them as essential contributors to the strength of our community, adopted the 17th day of May 2021.
All right. And hearing the proclamation, do I hear a motion that we adopt May 2021 as Older Americans Month?
You're going to let the senior Mike do that?
Please.
It's appropriate.
I'll make a motion.
The senior statesman, Commissioner Jeff Branch, has made that motion. Any other discussion or comment? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries unanimously. So thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Next is Social Work Recognition, and Ms. Kim Arnett and Crystal Henderson are here. Good evening.
Thank you for allowing us to be here this evening. So we have a combination of recognition for March, which was Social Worker Appreciation Month, and then also April, which was Child Abuse Prevention Month. So we presented to our DSS Board in March about, we talked about kind of the day, a day in the life of a social worker, what our social workers do and how they work with families to intervene in situations of child maltreatment and hopefully prevent further abuse and neglect. And so we were asked by our Board to present this information to all of you and to all of our citizens who are currently watching. And so with us, or with me, I have Crystal Henderson. She is one of our in-home services social workers, which is on our Protective Services side. She's been with the agency for about two and a half years. She's been an asset to many families that she has worked with, and of course, an asset to our agency and county. She's been in the field of social work for about 13 years, so she has a lot of experience to draw from. So I'm going to let her talk to you about what we, what our social workers do.
Good evening. How are you all?
Doing well. Thank you.
I just want to take a minute for, to thank you guys for allowing us to be here, and also from the last meeting, you guys approving us to use the classification of I A and T for social workers, that's the state classification, and hopefully, this will help us not only retain some pretty seasoned folks, but also recruit some seasoned folks as well. That way, we can provide better services to the families in Caldwell. So I want to start off just telling you guys how the state defines child protective services. The state definition of child protective services is a program that strives to ensure safe, permanent nurturing families for children by protecting them from abuse and neglect while attempting to preserve the family unit. So when Kim initially asked me to speak to the DSS Board, I thought, well, this is going to be simple, I know what I do every day, but I really didn't realize how hard it was to pinpoint in just a couple minutes what our days really truly look like. No two days are ever alike, and as much as we want our days to be routine and scheduled, that's rarely ever the case. Child welfare is a myriad of experiences. Each day, we travel to schools, hospitals, jails, homes, and each day, we talk with families about the most difficult of topics, such as parenting, relationships, substance use, trauma, abuse, prostitution, violence. No topic or location is ever off limits, and there's no end to the situations that we find ourselves in every day. We also experience numerous emotions. I've laughed with families, I've cried with families, and even grieved with them. I've been angry with parents and even lost my temper with them. I've genuinely cared for families and have had several sleepless nights worrying about them. We walk into high-risk, potentially unsafe homes every day, homes that law enforcement officers urge us to use caution, and we're armed with only a notebook and a pen to offer support to families who are hostile, often in the middle of a crisis, usually don't want us there, and even tell us where the reason their family has problems to begin with. While the reforms and paperwork are the same for every family, there's no one-size-fits-all approach to child welfare, and every family needs something different. Here are a few things that child protective services workers in this county have done to help and support families. We've transported families to any place you could imagine, the grocery store, court, the doctor, hospitals, rehab. A mother once even tried to get me to drop her off for date night after I took her to an NA meeting. We've helped families, we've helped victims escape abusive relationships and then attend to court and sit with them while they testify against their abuser, so they're not, so they don't feel quite so anxious and afraid. We grieved with family, with a family when their baby died, and then grieved with the same family a couple months later when their mother passed away. We've helped families clean their homes, homes you wouldn't even want to step in, let alone clean. I once washed dishes for three hours straight and still didn't get them all done. We rented a dumpster to help a family clean the trash out of their home. We've been in homes with smells that make your nose burn and your eyes water, and hours after you've left the visit, the smell still lingers on your clothes. We do this with a straight face because we never want to offend one of our families. We've thrown away clothes and shoes that we've ruined after going into someone's home, both because of sanitary reasons or even methamphetamine use. A coworker once gifted her entire team silicone shoe covers for Christmas. Speaking of dirty homes, when you think a situation can't get any worse, imagine a roach, or roaches, falling from a ceiling and landing on you as you're talking with a family. We've been in homes with roaches so thick it looks like the walls are moving, homes with bedbugs, rats larger than domestic cats, and somewhere in the chaos, you remember that there's a family that doesn't get to leave this situation in an hour and go home when the visit's over. I've taken more baths with the Clorox wipe than I ever care to admit. We've helped families apply Lice Treatment to their children's hair, and then stopped on the way home to pick one up for ourselves, just in case. We've mailed a mom pictures her children drew and letters they wrote while she was in rehab to try to keep her encouraged after she wanted to leave. We've moved more families than U-Haul, at least it feels like that anyway. In a field dominated by women, if you've ever seen a couple girls picking up the mattress on the side of 321 after it fell off a truck, I bet money they were social workers. We returned a mentally ill mother's stuffed animal way after hours when she accidentally left it in her social worker's car because her own children were removed, and this toy, which she treated as a child, brought her a little bit of comfort. We have had to teach families the most basic of skills, how to mix formula, how often to feed a baby, how to burp a baby, change a diaper, how to make a bed, how to cook anything that isn't frozen, how to budget, how to clean, how to dress for court or an interview, when it's appropriate to take your child to the doctor, or even not call 911, are just a few things that come to mind. We try to comfort children and explain to them why they can't keep living with their family when worst comes to worst and those children can't safely stay in that home anymore. I imagine CPS workers have purchased hundreds of Happy Meals throughout the years in some small attempt to make a kid feel better, even if it's only for a few minutes. We've transported children in custody to live in homes with foster parents we've never met, and on the way, we try to convince them that it really is going to be okay, and we're choking back our own tears in the process. Being a CPS worker has its challenges on a normal day, and 2020 gave us COVID, along with all the other problems that don't just go away because there's a pandemic. Not only were we completing our same responsibilities each day, but we were tasked with trying to find supplies, not only for our own family, but the families we serve. Imagine trying to find toilet paper during the great toilet paper shortage of 2020, and then being willing to, being willing to share what you do find with other families. We deliver meals to families one day every week when school shut down last year. A lot of the programs that we counted on to support families didn't operate for a large part of 2020, and we were left with trying to identify alternate resources, and at times, even providing services or interventions to families ourselves. We're often told, there's no way I could do your job, and we are frequently pulled away from our own families for long hours, and at times, they, too, ask us why we continue to do this job. They ask us why we continue to show up for a thankless job, where most hate to see us coming, we're being yelled at, cursed, and threatened, it's just something you get used to. One in-home worker was once assaulted with a shoe, and at times, threats are made about our own families. Burnout's very common in child welfare, but there's a few that have true passion for it, and even when they try to leave, something always pulls you back. It takes a special set of skills to be a CPS worker, skills that you don't learn in a classroom, skills like resiliency, a sense of humor, positive attitude, flexibility, the ability to build rapport with the most difficult of people are a must for CPS workers. Occasionally, there are remarkable times when you get to be a small part of someone's story, those moments when you encounter an unusually successful family and you see a glimpse of something beautiful, those families that totally transform their lives and you realize that you not only got to be a witness, but you're a small part of it, too. It's those families that continue to contact you years after their case is closed because you truly supported them, partnered with them, and they not only accepted responsibility, but did something about it. They understood that you were not their enemy, but truly did want to help them. Those moments are what keeps us going. So what's a typical day as a CPS worker? Well, there's really not one.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the report and the recognition of our social workers, and we appreciate what each one does, certainly for our families and in our county.
Mr. Chairman, I think, I want to, want to thank you guys for coming. I think it's something that, as we continue to move forward, you know, being on the BSS Board, I've learned a lot more about what goes on out there, and I think, you know, specifically in the child welfare side and also the older adults, it's a, it's amazing what these, mostly women, I think you might have a couple guys, and I will say many women, do every day. I think we, I don't think we truly understand the day of a social worker, specifically in child protective services. So I want to make sure that you guys know how much we appreciate you, and I think it's a great job, you did a great job with this, and it's always good to educate us on what's really happening. Sometimes we get caught up in our own days and lives of what we do, and we don't really think about just how blessed and how fortunate we are, and you guys see it, the ones that aren't, and I commend you for all you do, and thank you for being there for those families.
All right. And with that, again, we just want to say we appreciate everything you do. And we'll move to our next item that we added this evening, and it was a proclamation for National Police Week, and just a personal note of why we wanted to do this, is the tragedy that we certainly suffered a couple weeks ago in the Watauga County area with our sheriff's office there, and, and the Caldwell County Sheriff's Office went up there and assisted in that particular incident, as well as many others, and I just didn't want it, let, didn't want to let it go by without making a proclamation in recognition of National Police Week in Caldwell County, May the 9th through the 15th. And last week, we did have a luncheon in which we invited all the police officers, sheriffs, deputies, highway patrol, any law enforcement person to a luncheon that we held for them in honor of them and for the things that they do and stand for, and, but it was just a small token of our appreciation. But again, we just wanted to recognize them with this proclamation for National Police Week. So whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week, and whereas the members of the Caldwell County Sheriff's Office play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of Caldwell County, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of our sheriff's office, and that members of our sheriff's office recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of the Caldwell County Sheriff's Office unceasingly provide a vital public service, now, therefore, be it resolved that the Caldwell County Board of Commissioners calls upon all citizens of Caldwell County and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 9th through the 15th, and I'll just say, all times, observe, as Police Week with appropriate ceremonies, observances, in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered dedicated service to Caldwell County, and in so doing, have established for themselves an inevitable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Be it further resolved that the Caldwell County Board of Commissioners calls upon all citizens to observe Friday, May 15th, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in Caldwell County in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community and have become disabled in the performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. In witness thereof, we here and to set our hand and cause the seal of Caldwell County to be affixed on this, the 17th day of May 2021. And with the reading of that proclamation, do I hear a motion that we approve it this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution as you read.
Any other discussion or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries unanimously. So we appreciate our sheriff's office. Major, I know you're back there in the corner somewhere.
There he is.
And you can let our folks at the sheriff's office, as well as all of our police departments, know that we truly appreciate the service they render to our citizens in the county. And that brings us then this evening to presentations, and first on that list is Tri-County Speedway and a donation that they have to the sheriff's office. Shad Higgins, come on up and...
I'm going to let Craig present that piece, won't put all the hard work in.
All right. Well, you come on up, Craig, and state your name and...
It's like a milk crate. I'm Craig.
Okay.
But that's all, if you ask him where Ronnie Payne was at, nobody'd know who you're talking about. If you ask him where Craig is, they'll all know where you're talking about.
Okay.
I've come with presents. If you want to pass those around, let me have that talking back. And also, we've got a couple of pictures, too, that we're taking this past Saturday night when we kind of honored everybody that had something to do with it. I'll leave those here. here as well. I'll read this article to you that we, that we actually had. This is our program, a weekly program that we do each and every race. I got with me Shad Higgins, our photographer Damon Halsey, our spotter's official Ronnie Sitzer, some know him as the American Mountain, we know him as our spotter official. And my, my role at the Speedway is I'm race director, and as I found out tonight, I'm a proud older American as well. Wednesday morning, March the 28th, 2021, started out as a normal day in the lives of Sergeant Chris Ward and K-9 Deputy Logan Fox, excuse me, of the Watauga County Sheriff's Department. As we've learned, they responded to residents to check on the resident when his employer called because he didn't report to work and was not answering the phone over the next 13 hours. Multiple law enforcement agencies, including members of the Caldwell County Sheriff's Department, responded to assist, and the ongoing standoff resulted in the deaths of the two sheriff's deputies, along with the shooter's mother and stepfather. On Thursday, March the 29th, I called Shad Higgins and Shane, his brother, two of the owners of TriCo Entertainment LLC, to see what we could do to help. Our community was hurting for our neighbors to the north, and as Americans and neighbors, we felt it was a duty for us to reach out in some way to bring something positive to such a tragedy. After talking to the Caldwell County Manager Stan Kaiser, expressing our need to help him some way, he put us in touch with Lieutenant John Austin with the Caldwell County Sheriff's Department. We told him we were putting a small cover together for the pre-race ceremonies to honor the lives of the fallen deputies and, and raise money in their honor for officer's safety gear for our deputies here at Caldwell County. If not for the carbon fiber safety helmet the Boone Police Officer was wearing when he came into the house to rescue Sergeant Fox and was also struck by a crazed gunman, we'd have lost three officers that day. More phone calls were made, and Lieutenant Austin said Deputy Brad Haas would be there to represent the sheriff's office, and we began our pre-race talking from Gatorade Victory Lane about the week's tragedy event. We then had a moment of silence, a tribute to the two Watauga deputies, followed by Mr. Boyd Campbell playing taps. Tri-County Speedway Track Champion John Avon, Ethel Edison, Prayer, and Jeff Howland, driver in our heritage limbed Lake Mal division, came to sing the national anthem. Wesley Parler did a flyover in his biplane. As, as I talked to Deputy Haas about the Caldwell County sending deputies to cover shifts from Watauga County, and about how safety gear, such as the helmets and bulletproof vests, that are made from a material known as Kevlar, has a, has a set lifespan and must be replaced when it times out. The drivers made their way up into the grandstands and tier marking to, to collect money. Teams then began to come forward, rallied by team owner Lee Falk to contribute money, and challenge other owners to come forward. Justin Carroll of Carroll Speed Shop, John Mount, owner of Josh Goval's Limited Lake Model stepped up, even John's dog Bear contributed $50. Tim Bean, father of Thomas Bean, and driver Johnny Price's number 28 price roofing Ford, came to the mic to announce all the proceeds from the team's racing apparel would be donated as well. Many people came out of the stands to bring their contributions to Victory Lane, from the drivers, sponsors, race teams, and fans, there was a, over $7,300, $7,300 was raised. It was also announced that any law enforcement officer that displayed their badge would be admitted free of charge throughout the rest of the 2021 season at Tri-County Speedway. We cannot begin to find the words to thank the race fans, sponsors, our Austin team owners, the Caldwell County Sheriff's Department, and, and for their support, not only at the Speedway, but for allowing us to be part of such a worthy cause. At this time, I, I would like to present the check. At the time this was made, it was $7,300. That, that thing grew just a little bit, and I'm proud to say that I have a check here for $7,560 to be used for officer's safety gear at Caldwell County Sheriff's Department. And I'd like to give that to Major.
All right.
Thank you, Sean. On behalf of the sheriff and every deputy sheriff's office, I want to say thank you.
We appreciate it.
We also want to say thank you to the people that contributed this. We are blessed to live in the county where people still support the law enforcement.
That's right.
We're blessed to live in the county where we've got a board of commissioners and a county manager that support the law enforcement, and we don't know how to tell you thank you enough, but this will go towards officer safety.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, I need a motion to accept those donated funds for the sheriff's office so they can spend them on the officer's safety, so do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the funds to the sheriff's department from Tri-County Speedway.
All right, any other discussion or comment? Again, I'd just like to say thank you for everything you've done, and we appreciate it and appreciate all that Tri-County's doing in our county. And a lot of folks don't know, but you guys there and Shad, we know that y'all are striving to be a good community neighbor there and doing a lot of things for our community, and it is very much appreciated as we go forward, so thank you. And so I'll call the question, all in favor of receiving this money, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously, and so we appreciate all that you're doing.
Thank you, guys.
Next...
I'm sorry, I just want to thank you.
Next is our State of the County Health Report, Ms. Taylor Hoover, as she makes her way from the back row, sitting back there with all the officials.
Thank you, guys, for having me today. My name is Taylor, I'm a health educator at the Health Department, and so I'm here to present the State of the County Health Report. So what is the State of the County Health Report? This is a report that we have to do for accreditation, so we do this every year that we do not do like our large community health assessment. So what this does is it shows the progress made on the Community Health Improvement Plan, also known as the CHIP. This has to be submitted to the state every year. So some changes that we're not used to for the State of the County Health Report, it's no longer a printed copy, that's why you don't have a copy in front of you, it's submitted online, so we transitioned to that. Also, we have like what's called a scorecard, and we'll be using the same platform for the community health assessment going forward. So with this assessment, we have to pick target areas, so the areas that we focused on were preventative care, substance abuse, and mental health, because we felt like those are the areas we needed to focus most on for this county. So for preventative care, one of our initiatives was the Quitline NC, you may be familiar with this, it provides free tobacco cessation to North Carolina residents, you can either call and text, and provides counseling. So the progress that we made in 2020, we completed over 20 referrals to the program. So we also use a grant known as the Infant Mortality Reduction Grant, and it helps provide free nicotine replacement therapy, so this is like the gum, lozenges, patches, so any Caldwell County resident who calls to receive counseling from Quitline NC can receive these Another initiative that we have was the Tobacco Treatment Specialist, so we go to a training, this is provided by Duke and UNC, they collaborate for that. It's a week-long training that our health educators go to, and then we're able to come back and provide tobacco cessation for our patients, so the progress that we made for that, we attended the training and we provided tobacco education to 32 individuals in the Another initiative was the Catch My Breath Program, so this is a evidence-based vaping prevention program, and it's provided to grades five through 12, so we were able to implement this into Hudson Middle School to all the grades, so about half of the population of Hudson Middle School has received this program. And then for our target area of substance abuse, of course, we have Drug Free Caldwell, it was formerly known as Project Lazarus, you may be familiar with it as that name, but this is a substance abuse coalition. So the progress that we made in 2020, we increased our involvement from some of the sectors we didn't previously have representation from, such as the youth and parent sectors. Of course, you also know that we proposed the Drug Free Communities Grant, and we were approved for the application for that, so we're continuing to work on that application. We're very thankful that we were permitted that. We also have the Lock Your Meds Campaign, so this is a national campaign that helps reduce prescription drug use in youth, so you may see like the lock boxes, that kind of keeps the medications locked up and out of the hands of youth, so there were 200 lock boxes that were purchased and distributed to a number of different organizations in the community, public, Caldwell County Public Schools, hospice, the West Caldwell Health Council, and the Helping Hands Clinic. So for the target area of mental health, of course, you know that Jonas Hill Hospital and Clinic opened in 2020, so this is a division of the Caldwell Memorial Hospital, it provides mental health services for the community, including in-hospital care, education, and at-home care management. So they opened in the spring of 2020, and they have 27 beds open for adult inpatient psychiatric hospitalization. So just to give you a little bit of data about COVID, since that did take up the majority of our year for 2020, from March to December, we had 5,860 cases in Caldwell County, also during that timeframe, we had 4,251 tests that were collected by the hospital, and there were 77 deaths in Caldwell County for 2020. So looking at the morbidity and mortality between the years of 2018 and 2019, to see how those have changed, they pretty much stayed the same as disease of the heart and cancer, however, Alzheimer dropped down to number four instead of three in 2019. So some of the emerging issues that we've seen since the last community health assessment, of course, we have the issue of mental health and substance abuse that keeps increasing, of course, the pandem, pandemic didn't improve this anymore, so while reducing mental health services, a lot of the organizations were closed during the year, so we weren't able to provide those services. Also, according to the North Carolina Division of Public Health Injury and Violence Prevention Branch, emergency department visits increased by 22%. We also had a hepatitis A outbreak in 2020, so this was prevalent in the homeless and substance-using populations. So unfortunately, we did discontinue some of our initiatives, and most of this was due to COVID, just not having the time or energy to put into that because COVID taking most of the focus, but we hope to take these back up in the following year. That's all I had to present for you. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Anybody?
Are you getting back on track after, I mean, as the COVID going away and getting more backed up?
Yeah, we're able to spend a lot more time on those initiatives rather than just day-to-day being COVID, so hopefully to see more next year.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next is our budget presentation for the year 2021, 2022. Stan Kaiser, Monty Woods, and Tony Hilton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say it's a pleasure to present the, the budget to you this year. I wanted to do a, a special thanks to the folks in the Finance Department and HR Department, as well as all the department heads and their staff who's worked on this budget, and particularly to Tony Hilton. Since this is a reval year, I thought it would be good to talk about reval, we, we only do it once every eight years, soon to be once every four years, and with that, I wanted to bring Monty Woods here just to give you a brief overview of reval. Monty?
Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
As Stan said, he has to put this small presentation together, sort of an overview of what we've done over the past four months here with this, but, you know, we're required to do a revaluation every eight years minimum. As Stan mentioned, there should be some discussion of advancing it to a four-year cycle, possibly a five-year cycle, whatever the commissioners deem that they would like to do. We talked about this in 2014, but in my opinion, we, you know, the, the economy was not booming that much, we were really with an inexperienced staff. One thing I want to mention now is that now we have three employees with nine years' experience and have been through a full reval, our, our minimum, we have one employee with just two and a half years, so we're really a lot better off staffing-wise to perform a four-year cycle, I believe, but that'll be something that, if you do want to do that, it will be by resolution to the North Carolina Department of Revenue to advance that you are allowed to advance, that you can do it. A lot of counties do a four-year, last I checked, about two-thirds were still on an eight-year cycle, but they are moving back to a four-year staffing-wise, it really depends on them. But that's the statute, 286 is what addresses that, 283 is the statute that tells us we have to be at 100% or close to 100%, and we look at the sales, and that's reflected in the current market conditions. One thing I want to emphasize is the market conditions were based upon the, basically the 19 and 20 sales, nothing in 21 has ever been looked at, and we all know that the market is, is just going crazy right now. It was doing okay in 18 and 19, started picking up in 20, and we were in the middle of a pandemic, pandemic. But just wanted to go over a few of the appraisal processes that we have gone through. We collect and review sales countywide, as I said, we cannot use any 21 sales because this was a January 1, 2021 revaluation. We also would analyze construction costs using the Marshall and Swift Valuation Guide, which is more used for commercial industrial things than it is residential, but we do look at the residential, but we also look at the local cost from local builders and what we did with that to try to develop some of our land pricing models, we're still looking at sales, the land sales were not that prevalent in this past few years. Lot prices, and a lot of you probably know, we're, we're filled with a lot of extra lots right now, if you want to build, the lots are available, but, you know, as we know, the building cost is going through the roof right now. What we did over the past few years, really two-plus years, is we tried to visit every piece of property to physically look at them and see what they looked like, and that's what takes typically about 18 straight months of, of review, but we also have to work in doing our new construction and things like that, so we, it'll take us a good two and a half years, therefore, it's hard to do anything less than a four-year cycle on a revaluation. This being my fifth revaluation I've been a part of, the second one that I was responsible for, I felt like it went very well. But we had to develop the Schedule of Values, and that was presented last September, it was adopted in November, but it was very difficult, you know, going into March and April of last year in the middle of a pandemic, you know, what the market was going to do, because I, I believe most of us would have all said, "We're in trouble," sales tax, things like that, and, you know, that's where, we tried to get where we thought we needed to be, but you're almost looking in a crystal ball. Like I said, we submitted the Schedule of Values in the fall of September. Continuing on the appraisal process, what we did is we mailed out all of our revaluation notices in February 1st, about three months ago. We took a good 30 days to do the, what they call an informal review, which is basically let the taxpayers talk to us. We did that online, we did it, you know, by phone calls, we tried to do with a mail-in, things like that, but they had a full 30 days to do that, and really, we, we stretched it out to about 60 days, because we began taking the, the formal Board of Equalization Review Appeals on April 5th, which is the first Monday in April. We adjourned about 10 days ago on May 6th, the Board has adjourned, and as of right now, I don't believe that we've had any appeals that came in postmarked. So that really, when you look at it, we had about 95 days, almost 100 days, to get your appeal in, a timely matter, because we have a budget, Tony's talking to me, the numbers, where are we at, where are we at with our values and things like that, so we felt like we gave the taxpayers a full month for the Board of VNR, really 60 days for informal appeals. But after that, right now, the Board of VNR Appeals, they have 30 days to apply, to appeal to the Property Tax Commission, which we still have, will have some of those, we received one today, that felt like the value that they were deemed in the Board of VNR was not appropriate, so they have the right to go to Raleigh, and that may be heard in six months or a year, right now, things have truly changed with the, with the COVID and stuff. The appeals comparison, as you can see, in 2013, we had almost 4,000 appeals, we came in a little on the high side with, with our values, we had 156 appeals to the Board of Equalization Review, and now we see in 21, with the market being as hot as it is, you know, we came in at only 819, which is one of the lowest I've ever seen. I know in 2005, we had almost 5,000 appeals informally, and we, I think it was about 275 Board of VNR. I think a lot of that is, is with the, the market right now, it's just, it's outstanding in the middle of a pandemic, and I don't know any of us would have thought that the market would do this in a pandemic, you know, with the rebound. But going, what we have to look at is our sales ratio. In 13, as I said, we came in a little on the high side, 101, and your goal is 100%. Our coefficient of dispersion, which is your COD as we refer to it, basically, that's shown as a percentage of how close you are to the, to the center, and a lot of people refer to it as, if you've ever shot at a bullseye, your goal is to hit the center every time, but sometimes you'll have a flyer and you'll be a little off, and sometimes you have houses that, you know, you can't figure out why it's sold that high or that low, and so you see our coefficient of dispersion in 13 was, was reasonable, the state... The state recommends somewhere in the teens, low teens, and I felt like we were pretty good back in '13. If you look at '20 before the revale, we were down about 8%. This is all done through the Department of Revenue. We have to do random sales. We can't pick the sales. We have a booking page that we have to look at, and then they have to, we have to take the next qualified sale. And our COD actually was in pretty good shape. It was 12%. And this year coming in, we came in a little on the low side. You know, our target was really around 99. You really don't want to over-assess the properties, so we came in at 97.41 with the COD of 6.53. So we were pretty good shape there. We felt that we were trying to hit right in the bullseye every time. But that's what we have on our sales ratio. And overall, our assessment last year was about $5.17 billion on taxable real property and things that we are, we are responsible for taxing when those include utilities. And '21, this year, we came in at $5,875 million. That'll probably be a little on the low side where we have appeals. We probably could be a little bit higher than that. And so that gives you an overall increase of $705 million, which, when you do the math, that equates to about a 13.64. I predicted we'd be around 12%, 10 to 12, but with the number of appeals we got, with the market doing what it's done, you know, we were surprised that the market has continued to ramp up. But that indicates that at that percentage, I was happy that we came in with so few appeals, but I think that's indicative of the, of what the market is and the lumber prices and building materials and things like that and steel. That's basically my presentation. One thing I do want to mention is that as of, we have until June 1st for any senior citizens who want to apply for an elderly exemption. A lot of them already have it, and so that had to be 65 or older, and their income's got to be less than $31,500. So I want to mention that, you know, to y'all, and if you know anyone who would like to apply for that, they have to get the application in by June 1st, and that's based upon their 2020 income. And the state just put legislation in that the stimulus checks do not count toward that income, which I think is the right thing to do. None of us wanted to show that income and put someone over that level. But just, if you know anyone, please let us know, and we'll get an application form or come by to try to help them out. And that, what that will do, it just takes $25,000 off the value of their property or one-half. So that could be a pretty good hit there. If you've got $100,000 piece of property, house, you only pay tax on $50,000 at city, county, wherever you live for that. But please, you know, let any senior citizens know on that income, 65 and 31.5 for the income. But that's pretty much my presentation. Do you have any questions about any of the numbers?
I wanted to ask you, who sets that income, Monty? Is that a state?
The state of North Carolina, because we get that a lot from people.
Right.
That's the same in Catawba County as it is in New Hanover County. And the state has it figured out, you know, as far as that threshold. I mean, the sad part is that they don't take into account your medications, and there's a lot of people who may spend $200 a month on medications. That's a hit. But the state knows, and we, if you probably bumped that up to $35,000, we'd probably get 20% more in. But they know how to set that, and it really goes from like $31,000 to 31.5 every year, just a small amount.
Right.
And I always encourage anybody that has that income, unfortunately, a couple normally will not qualify with their social security check.
Right.
That is really sad, but I have no problem, and I offer it to people in the Board of VNR, and I'll look and see if they're getting an elderly exemption. Some of them aren't, and I'll say, you know, "We need to apply and help the senior citizens out because they truly are on a fixed income."
Yeah.
Any other questions from any of you?
Do we communicate that to the senior centers?
Absolutely. Every year, we've done a presentation with Paige, and we actually go out to the senior center every year. I think this last one was a Zoom. Past couple's been a Zoom, but in the years past, one of our employees in that department goes out and visits the senior citizen and talks to them. And, you know, the people in the senior centers know it to put that out there to them and stuff.
Monty, I noticed that the last numbers you had were 2013, and prior to 2013 was our last revale, 2005, eight years prior to that. So in 16 years, we've only had two revales.
Yes.
What challenges does that bring when a county only does revale twice in 16 years?
Yeah, it's tough when you see things like that. You know, it's, you need to advance it, but we didn't have the staffing in '14 when we talked about that. But I feel good about our staffing now. We've got experienced people, and they'll do a good job, and I think we've done a good job this year just with the staff that we have.
Well, I remember then you said you would need to add staff. So you're saying now that you think you could handle that with your current staffing?
I think we may need to add one more. When I started over 30 years ago, we had seven people in that department with 42,000 parcels. We have five people in there with 52,000 parcels. We've done a good job of what we've had to work with. In the '13 revale, we had to downsize. We lost one staff member because we were going to an eight-year cycle. We didn't need that many. But, you know, I don't feel like we're overstaffed by any means. I think we really, what I've, I've not talked to Mr. Kaiser about it, but I believe we need sort of a float position in between that would be an appraiser, but also some office staff. Like I said, when you'd had seven people, seven full-time people doing 42,000, now we're down to five people with 52,000 parcels to cover. I don't think we've gotten any fatter in our department. You know, we're very lean, but that's, I think we can do it, but it'd be a tough situation. You couldn't do it in less than four. And if something happens in the market, you could always move, you could do a resolution and say, "I want to do it in five or six," and that all depends on, you know, what the market's doing. But, you know, my recommendation is absolutely we need to go to a four-year cycle with what the market's doing.
So you could plan for four, and if something changes in four, you could move to five or six or whatever.
Burke County's done that a number of years. We ran a '97 revale that I got the tail end of. We did an '01, we did an '05, and I was a part of that. We had an '09 revale, but the market tanked. We backed it out. We were going to do an '11. We reviewed the property again, and we backed it out to '13. So you can, you can move the number, but you have to do a resolution stating that you want to advance it. And then if you say, "Oh, we don't want to do one in '25," we've got to send another resolution to the state that says we want to do it in '26. And there's nothing wrong with that. I mean, that can happen. But I think that's, we should shoot for four because I think that's the minimum that we can get the work done, to go out and review the property and look at it, because you really need to look at every piece of property as best you can every time and not do what they call a tabletop. I mean, just doing a lateral move on things because some people maintain their homes better than others. But I would recommend that we do the resolution sometime this summer and move forward with that, and then if we don't like it, we can go to five or six.
Well, I think Josh got my house and my neighbor's house mixed up, just so you'll know.
Sometimes the vision may not be good.
I'm just kidding you. I see him back there in the room, so I want to give him some, a still shout out here.
He's one of our young appraisers that's, like I said, about nine years now. We hired two. You know, when we had the '13 revale, we had myself, one other guy that'd been about 20 years. We had Josh, who'd been here for six months, and we had the other guy had been here for one day and threw him into the fire for the notices. So now we've got, you know, three people with nine years, one with two and a half. We've got an experienced staff, and that's retention, that's salary study, things like that. We're keeping people in the office. I think they're happy with their position and stuff. But as far as advancing it, you know, we could use another person at some point. I've not asked for that. We definitely didn't need one for an eight-year cycle, but you go to a four-year, it's going to be harder to try to get the numbers out and do a good job.
And I want to say something too, because you alluded a minute ago about this process starting in January and carrying through now, but your staff is looking at, I mean, really, this is an 18-month process minimum to start getting ready for one.
When we did, you know, when I was here in '97 and we did the '01, '05, as soon as we wrap the bow on this one, which we basically have, we're going to start doing a little prep stuff this summer. We'll start new construction this fall. January of '22, we've got to be wide open, going to visit properties, because, you know, you've got cycles we have to pull off and can't do review work when we're actually going out and measuring new homes, and the building permits are doing well, better than I thought they would be considering the market and the lumber prices and stuff. But no, it's a really quick turnaround, and the staff have never seen that. When you've got an eight-year cycle, you've got a little bit more time to breathe and get some things corrected. But when you go to a four-year cycle, as soon as you finish one, you're back into another cycle, and it's really quick. It's a quick turnaround.
It's a lot of time to visit 52,000 properties.
It is. We've always done that. You know, Mike was persistent about that, and he would tell us some words to get out, "Get out of here and go get it done," and that's what we did. Got it done, and we thought we got it in a good time. Like I said, in the '09 revale that didn't happen, we went out and reviewed everything again in two, in a year and a half for the '11 and didn't do it. And he said, "Well, go look at it again. Make sure you feel good about it." You know, because you can look at a house one day, and you can come back and look at it three weeks later, a month later, and you can see it a little bit differently and stuff. But trying to hit things in the middle of a pandemic, I thought we did pretty good, you know, based upon what we thought the sales were going to do. You know, I think everybody realizes that it was going to tank, and they have not. Tanks that are going down, they've gone straight up.
Right.
And we just haven't, we can't look at those '21 sales at all.
Well, you guys did a great job.
I appreciate it.
Coming in, you and your staff both on doing what you did.
Thank you.
Thank you, Monty.
Monty, thank you. Appreciate it. I would like to give you a brief overview of the county budget for the coming year, 2021, 2022. Caldwell County has completed its revales, Monty said, and we're in the, this is the budget that reflects those results. The general fund budget includes a fund balance appropriation of $4.5 million. That's down from the prior year's fund balance appropriation of $8.8 million. The tax rate, this budget maintains the current countywide property tax rate of $0.63. The revenue neutral tax rate is $0.60.68. Fire departments, we've had two requests for increase. Grace Chapel Fire Department has requested an increase of $0.02, and Bethlehem Fire and Rescue has requested an increase of $0.01. Education, the recommended budget maintains the county's commitment to education. Current expense funding is held steady at $14.8 million. The recommended budget continues to fund the six SRO officers to ensure that every school covered by the county has full-time officers. Funding for the college has been maintained at the current amount of $3.5 million. Capital outlay, again, this year has been delayed in the budget due to COVID. We're waiting to see what will come in from federal programs. We hope this will reassess the capital outlay spending during the next coming fiscal year. We do know we're going to receive approximately $16 million. We've had a brief overview of what the parameters that we can use the money for, but we would like to nail it down a little closer before we start making a commitment. And the water fund, the budget for the water fund includes an increase in fees necessary as the county received an increase in the cost to purchase water from both Lenora and Granite Falls. The total revenue in the water fund is set at $3.1 million. Radio read meters have been installed for almost all customers. There's only about, I think, 50 or 60 left to be installed, and those are usually the larger taps, not the 3/4-inch, but a 2- and 3-inch and above. And the water fund currently serves over 9,000 customers. And I'll turn it over to Tony Hilton now for continuation.
Good evening.
Good evening. You kind of speak for the night in that tie.
I'm trying to look a little impressive here. Few budget statistics. General fund budget is recommended at $87.2 million for next year. Total spending for all of our annual budgets, these are not our capital projects, but are annually funded ones that repeat every year, totals $104.3 million. So I don't know if everybody really realizes how large of a financial operation the county actually is, but it's a substantial amount. This does not, this budget does not include any new borrowings. No capital outlay loan is included. We're hoping we're able to use the new American Rescue Plan funds to purchase our capital. If that doesn't work out, we can still go back and issue the loan sometime during the fiscal year, whenever we're ready to do so. County's debt per capita remains very low compared to other counties. We're in good shape as far as our debt load. A couple of these pie charts, I try to do one of these every year. This kind of shows you where the county's money goes in the general fund. You see a big chunk for education. There's a big chunk there for social services. A lot of that's funded by the state and federal government. That's just the expenditure portion there. But you can see the other areas, sheriff, EMS, different things, just for whatever that's worth. And then this is the revenues for the general fund. You can see the property tax makes up the vast majority of it. The departmental revenues, that's anything that apartment generates. You know, for DSS, that would be your federal and state money. For EMS, that's ambulance fees, just whatever generated by that activity to help offset its cost. And then, excuse me, you can see sales tax and other things there too, but just kind of gives you a feel for where the money comes from.
Tony, has that sales tax number grown any?
It's, yeah, this year's the best year we've had in a while. Our sales tax has done very well. I think, my personal opinion, what's happened is during the pandemic, people have stopped traveling outside the county to purchase things as much as they used to, and they're either buying it locally or they're shopping on an online option where the sales tax comes back to us too. But, yeah, it's been up significantly this year, so that's helped us. Each of you should have one of these booklets. It's got all the details for the recommended budget in it. If you get to looking in this, if you've got any questions, I'll be happy to answer them any way I can. I know I've talked to a couple of you about maybe a few tweaks you'd like to see made before we do the final budget, and that's always an option for you guys, so if you'll just communicate, you know, what the consensus is, we can do whatever changes, tweaks, or whatever you'd like to do. And before I leave, I'd just like to thank the racetrack guys for what they did tonight. I know anybody that was working here in 2008 will never forget that year, and we had a lot of bad things happen. We lost an officer, and we had some other officers shot, and that's been kind of an issue I care about ever since then. I've tried to make it a point every year when we have our, part of what we do when we put this budget together, we meet with department heads and ask them, you know, "What have you asked for? What do you need?" Whenever we meet with the sheriff and his staff, I always try to ask them, "If you've got enough money in there for vests? Have you got enough for protection, for equipment?" Try to make sure that we got that covered, and I appreciate you guys trying to help us with that, and I know they'll find a good use for the money, and probably what's more important than the money would just be the, them knowing that the people gave this and give up something to try to help them and support them. And I think in the world we're in right now, the more we can show support for those guys, the better we all are. So, so once again, thanks. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Anybody questions or comments for the manager this evening?
Just want to thank everybody, all your staff, Stan and Tony, for all you did. I know budget time's always a kind of a chaotic, crazy time. Everybody's trying to get stuff in. Everybody wants this, wants that, but I commend you for all your hard work and your staff's hard work, and you guys do a wonderful job. We're awfully blessed to have you, Tony.
Just one thing I don't want you to forget, you need to have a motion to call for the public hearing on the budget, June 21st at 6:00 p.m.
All right. So here in the recommendation, I'll call, make a motion to call for public hearing on June 21st at 6:00 p.m. for the adoption of our budget. Any other discussion or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries unanimously. So, June the 21st, and any revisions or things that we want to talk about, I guess, to get with Tony or Stan in the meantime. So, very well. Next is our consent agenda and our county manager, Mr. Dan Kaiser.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We ask tonight for your approval of the minutes from the March 8th and April 12th meeting. We have a budget, approve a budget revision for DSS of $72,982.10 for low-income energy assistance program. There's no local funds. We ask for your approval of a budget revision for the water department, $15,000 increase in revenue expenditures to cover a budget shortfall, no local funds. We ask for your approval of emergency services drone purchase of $7,466.10. This will purchase a drone to aid in search and rescue with fire response that's from the existing budget. No additional funding necessary. We ask you approve a budget transfer for the health department of $8,493.87 to purchase a laboratory-grade freezer to store COVID-19 vaccines. Approve a budget revision of $20,000, which increases flow-through for occupancy tax to the Chamber of Commerce. Approve a budget revision of $147,000, increase in revenue and subsequent expenditure for each fire district based on tax collection. Budget revision for maintenance of $53,360 to cover the cost of mowing through the end of the fiscal year. Approval to add additional environmental health program specialist position. Approval of a resolution to cap the tax on potential sawmills rescue district. Approval of resolution for surveying of the county-owned property located at the intersection of Falls Avenue and Grace Chapel Road. This is the 28 acres we own there, and we'll be dividing it up into three separate parcels. We have had interest in the separate parcels, but not in the parcel as a whole. So, we think that will facilitate the sale. We ask that you cancel the Collettsville Water Tank Project. We will rebid when construction calls stabilize, and we ask for your approval to add an NC childcare health consultant, and this is funding through the Smart Start Program.
All right. So, hearing all on our consent agenda as read by our county manager, what's the pleasure of the board in adopting our consent agenda this evening?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept this evening's consent agenda as the county manager has presented.
All right. Any other discussion or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries unanimously. And then this evening, we've got appointments, one appointment to the library board, and we had four names that were submitted, and we have two vacancies there. And so, we've each been given a ballot to vote for the two that we, as commissioners, would place on the library board, so we will pass those over to our clerk and see who the two appointees to the library board is this evening, as he tallies the vote. And while he does that, we want to thank everyone for being here this evening and being in attendance at our meeting and taking a part in your county government. It's a very important part a lot of people overlook, but when you start talking about budget and tax rates and things of that nature, they typically show up or either call one. So, we're trying to be out front of all of that and appreciate all the work that's gone into that budget and the things that we're doing as a county. So, do you have those two?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The two appointees to the library board be Emily Gibbons and Christine Hilton.
All right. So, do I hear a motion that we appoint these two ladies to the library board?[1747.91]